Good evening, everyone. I will call to order the meeting of the common council for Tuesday, March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Clerk?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. We have twelve members in the room and twelve members voting and signing specific votes.
Very good. Thank you. Now, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation offered by Alder Steyer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to your republic, which extends its hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral.
Alder Steyer.
You can all be seated. Thank you, Your Honor. This is simply called invocation. Dear Lord, it is no coincidence that tonight's city council invocation is to be delivered by me. Tonight's, tonight represents the last of my two hundred eighty-eight or so council meetings over time. Dear Lord, I'm here to thank the other eleven alders, mayor, staff, and citizens of the great city of Green Bay. Dear Lord, I also ask for forgiveness from the aforementioned that I may have hurt in any way, shape, or form. Dear Lord, to the other twenty-eight alders that I have served with over time, thank you for the wisdom, friendships, and even acrimonies that we have shared over the past twelve years. Dear Lord, I signed up for this position with public service in mind. I have succeeded often and have failed at times. Please know my heart as I continue to strive. Dear Lord, continue to bless our council, our administration, our employees, and our citizens as we look for answers in a turbulent world. I ask this in your name, the name Jesus. Sincerely, your humble servant, Mark Joseph Edward Westside Steyer.
Thanks for those words, Alder. Um, I'll entertain a motion on approval of the minutes.
So move.
Alder Scannell makes a motion to approve the minute, seconded by Alder Eck. Those are the minutes from the March fifth meeting of the common council. Any changes there? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? The ayes have it. The minutes are approved. Approval of the agenda.
So move.
Alder Scannell makes a motion to approve the agenda, seconded by Alder Stevens. Alder Eck?
I'd like to make a motion to move Q to after M, please. So Parks.
Q, the report of the Plan Commission?
Well, what is this? It says a report of the Park Committee. For Q on mine. What is yours?
Q is Parks.
It says Parks on the one, but then the printed one is different.
Yeah, I've got.
So which one is right?
One in here is correct. Q is Parks, M is on my left.
Got it.
So what is the new, what is the new Plan Commission one?
So Plan Commission is, um, P is in Paul.
You've got the right one.
All right, so yes, to move that one, uh, the P, the P as in after M, please.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
P for the?
P for Planning?
Yep.
After?
So you want to move Plan Commission?
What?
You want to move Plan Commission? Is that right?
Yes, please. After M.
All right. P after M, that is a motion to amend. Is there a second for that? Uh, that was seconded by Alder Johnson.
Well, this is different than the picture.
P after M, but P is already after M.
Right.
Um, okay.
Correct.
What was P after M? It already is.
Is there a need to do this?
Oh, after RDA. I'm sorry, there was just with the confusion on the printing versus non. Okay, so after RDA.
Okay. Just tell me the, the actual committee that we want to move.
The Planning?
Planning Commission?
To after RDA.
After RDA.
So after L? Well, it already is, but, okay. Right after it, though.
Immediately after.
Immediately after, that's what I'm saying.
Who's on first? Okay.
Do you understand? Okay.
Yes.
Gosh.
I think so. So a motion to move, uh, Planning to immediately follow RDA. Um, is there a second for that? Seconded by Alder Johnson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? The ayes have it, and?
There is some snafu in our computers. I know, I was talking to Alder Steyer this afternoon. He asked something about my district, and in my computer it shows us L, the redevelopment authority one, and on his computer it showed M. So there is some snafus in our?
Okay. What's that item?
I don't want to bring it up, but it's?
Right, right, right.
Uh, item two is the one that we were just discussing.
Okay. Got it. Thank you for that note. So we have? Alder Scannell makes a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Is there a second? Seconded by Alder Morgan. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? The ayes have it, and the agenda is approved as amended. Report by the mayor, um, couple things. Uh, just wanted to make a note that we've got elections coming up. I think all of our councils are aware of that. A lot of our members are, uh, members of the public as well, but just wanted to remind folks, uh, early in-person absentee voting has begun in City Hall. I know their clerk's office is working hard, um, facilitating the process today, so appreciate that. Of course, encouraging everybody to vote. If you have questions, feel free to reach out to our clerk's department or, um, Wisconsin Elections Commission, um, the very accessible website, so check that out. Um, speaking of elections, we've got a few retirements. Um, we're saying goodbye sadly to, uh, to Alder Brunet, Alder Scannell, Alder Steyer. A lot of years of service represented in just those three individuals. Um, some would say a fair amount of wisdom as well, maybe, you know, depends on who you ask, but, but I would say that. So sincerely, though, I just, I really appreciate, uh, all the years of service that you've devoted to this community. Uh, we've had some lively discussions here, some occasional disagreement, but there's obviously, uh, the vast majority of the time, there's a lot of consensus and a lot of, uh, you know, shared pushing in the same direction. So I just wanted to, to thank, um, you three individuals specifically, since you are retiring from, from this body, and, uh, I know you're not going too far. We'll see you around town, um, but, but thank you so much for, for your service. Uh, with that, we'll move along to announcements from our council. Any council announcements for us? Alder Scannell, one of the men of the hour. Go ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor. If you'll indulge me just a little, since this is my last one, I would like to give out, uh, a few thanks and do a little short recap here. At first, I'd like to thank my wife, Rose, who has been a steadfast advisor and my treasurer. Couldn't add two plus two without her. Uh, the three amigos who pushed me to run, you know who you are. Uh, in this job, I've met a lot of politicians, federal, state level. My fellow alders, past and present, mayors, past and present. I've learned a lot from all of you, and I've appreciated working with all of you. Uh, there's a lot of organizations and nonprofits in this city. It's been a pleasure to network with them and to help them with their agendas, to make this city a much better place. Uh, working with the business and bid boards, who add so much vitality to our downtown and our military and Old Main. Uh, it's just been great what they do and to be able to help them. And our neighborhood associations, can't say enough about our neighborhood associations, I'm afraid. I was quite ignorant of them before I ran, and Alder Steyer introduced me to them as I was campaigning, and, uh, it's just been wonderful how they enliven and, uh, engage the neighbors in, in our city. Uh, staff has been, it's just been a delightful, staff are the, 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 the driving wheel of this city, and I can't say enough about, uh, the great staff we have, and I really appreciate all the patience you've shown me, uh, learning the ropes over the years and doing what I can to facilitate you doing your job to help this city be a great city. And then lastly, of course, my constituents, who've stuck with me through five terms, and, uh, it's been great, uh, knocking doors and talking to people and, and being their representative. And as their representative, I'd like to just hit a few highlights of what we've accomplished. Uh, together, we initiated the reorganization of protection and welfare to protection and policy for more efficient governance. We initiated the formation of the Plugbook Arts Commission and the Sustainability Commission. We initiated the collection of plastic bags at, uh, downtown at the Wildlife Sanctuary, and because of that, we have so far gotten four, uh, free benches. Two of them are at the Wildlife Sanctuary and two at Ken Yuris Park, which makes me very happy, because another initiative that we, uh, took up was, uh, that park had fallen into ruin, Ken Yuris, and we, uh, worked to get that revitalized. Um, we've played a significant role during the worldwide pandemic to provide as much relief as we could to essential workers, to the businesses, and to the medical facilities in the greater Green Bay area. We played a significant role in developing our city, starting out with the rail yard, which I think if you look at the north end of Broadway now and from when I started, it's magic. It's just wonderful what's going on there. Our downtown, several developments, but let's, uh, pick particular, the Northland Hotel, which, you know, there's, there's, and a lot of these developments, there's a lot of kickback and pushback, but, I mean, I think, uh, everybody's glad that, uh, with the end results and how these developments have helped our city with our, increased our tax base, keep our taxes lower, and the vitality and the, uh, that they create in our city. And lastly, we, uh, helped develop the, uh, Velveve Avenue Plan, as well as amending that plan for a major housing development. So there's just, uh, some of the highlights. I want to thank everyone, and, uh, take care.
Alder Steyer.
I'll piggyback a little bit on Randy there. Um, that was true. I, Randy and Rose and a few of us worked on the West Side Trail, and we, we had four neighborhood associations gather. That was probably the highlight of the neighborhood associations for me. We all got together, we worked, we cleaned it, we got it, uh, passed, and, uh, it's an asset to, to the neighborhood. So a few other things I'm proud of, uh, early on in my term, in two thousand thirteen, we voted to save the Larson Buildings, uh, into the rail yard. It's a long story. Took eleven months, a lot, a lot of meetings. Also, with Alder Brunet, we worked on, and Alder Scannell to a degree, the homelessness coalition, uh, back in two thousand twelve. Uh, the Bart Starr Memorial Bridge, that was a highlight for me, you know, getting to be the emcee is something that I tried to get going down at the state, and, uh, very proud of that. Military Avenue Development, and like Alder Scannell said, the Velveve Avenue Plan, the Hotel Northland, I even wrote an article on it. So I, there's a lot of stories. I can tell some funny stories, too, but maybe we'll have to go out afterwards to hear those. But I, I thank my citizens, I thank my wife, my family, all of you. Appreciate everything you've done. I really do. I've learned so much, and hopefully I've grown on a few people, too. So, thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Brunet?
Yeah, thank you, uh, thank you, Mayor. I wasn't gonna say anything, but after Alder Scannell and Steyer, uh, said their words, I felt I would need to say at least thank my wife, because I can't have you thank your wife and not thank mine. Uh, you know, for twelve years, I've been in elected office, four years in county board, and eight years on the city council, four years as president, and my wife has put up with a lot over the years, a lot of mental, um, occupation with this role, some of the conflict, the division we've seen in our society. COVID was a difficult time, some of the civil unrest we experienced as a body here. I married a woman who's absolutely incredible, very supportive, but she hates politics. So go figure that that was her destiny, to be attached to someone like me. But, uh, just such a great city. Um, and I see over time divisions forming in our society, nationally, statewide, and even at the local level. And I think that history will really judge poorly those in our community and our society that divide us. We all bleed the same blood, and we all struggle with different things, and I've always felt that despite the issues that divide us, I've always felt, and I hope that this is the legacy I leave behind, that I was decent and honest and fair with people regardless of our disagreements. I can be stubborn, as some of you have seen through the years, and I stand up for what I think is right, while also understanding that what another person considers right might be right as well. And so how do we navigate that as a society? That will be the challenge for our country and our greater world. Uh, I will say that I'll miss this council greatly. You all have become, in a lot of ways, my friends. Uh, missed the city staff, those who have done absolutely incredible work for the community. Uh, and one of my greatest memories, and I'll end here, uh, remember four years ago around this time during COVID, uh, we decided the city council, uh, president election by a coin flip. You remember? That was six straight votes of a six-six tie with a, another alder, wonderful representative. Um, but we, uh, we were divided as a council, and after the sixth coin flip of a six-six tie, mayor said, I won't break this tie, but, uh, he led us to decide, and we voted to actually go ahead with the coin flip, and I picked the right side of the coin, and here I was. So I'd like to think, though, Mayor, even though, uh, you said you weren't gonna have a role in deciding the election, if we really pushed you, you probably would have voted for me, right?
I don't, who's to say?
I'd like to think you would. So, uh, yeah, all due respect to all the people I've maybe disagreed with in the past. Uh, we, we have a great city, a great community, and hoping that, uh, really like the progress we made over the last year. I think this is a really well-functioning government we have formed for the last year, partly due to the mayor, Alder Johnson, and the rest of the council. So regardless of what the elections, uh, hold for two weeks, I'm hoping that we continue as a community a really good, representative, um, city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements from council? Seeing none, we'll move along to recognitions and awards. Um, I think we have some members of the newly formed or reformed Murphy Park Neighborhood Association joining us. If, if we do, if they could approach the podium, um, we have a resolution. We have a resolution recognizing the Murphy Park Neighborhood Association, so I will, I will read that, and then I'll ask council to, uh, to hopefully approve that for us. So whereas the mayor and the common council of the city of Green Bay, along with its staff and citizens, recognize the importance of developing and maintaining healthy neighborhoods throughout the community, and whereas the city of Green Bay values citizen involvement and wishes to reach out to all segments of the community by supporting the formation of effective neighborhood associations, and whereas the Murphy Park Neighborhood Association has been organized by residents of the city of Green Bay with a mission statement as follows, quote, "The Murphy Park Neighborhood Association's mission is to encourage a special bond among neighbors, businesses, and organizations in order to foster a sense of community in our neighborhood," unquote. Whereas the Murphy Park Neighborhood Association will serve residents of the city of Green Bay in the neighborhood bounded by North Military, Shawno Avenue, Moraine Terrace, and Taylor Street, now therefore be it resolved that the city of Green Bay, whose mayor and common council are here and assembled, officially recognizes the Murphy Park Neighborhood Association, and be it further resolved that the mayor, common council, and staff of the city of Green Bay hereby pledge their support and cooperation in addressing the needs of the citizens of this neighborhood in particular and the community in general." Thank you so much for, for taking this on and forming the neighborhood association.
I'm happy to say that they elected me treasurer of this group, so hopefully that'll work out. But looking forward to everybody here. Um, you know, we've got a big group of people on this. We're looking forward to what the city?
Fantastic. All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Uh, now, entertain a motion on appointments. Motion to approve our new appointment, made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Johnson. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? The ayes have it, and that appointment has been made. Onto ordinance's second reading for adoption.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules has been made by Alder Scannell, um, seconded by Alder Johnson. That's to suspend the rules, take up these items with one roll called vote. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? The ayes have it. The rules are suspended.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt, made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Johnson. What are we gonna do without Alder Scannell making these, making these motions like that? Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll use the board. Okay. Alder Brunet votes yes.
Okay. Sorry. We're, listen, we're trying to figure out the difference between the agenda that's on what you see and what I have, and so, forgive me. Okay.
I haven't figured that out yet either.
Okay. And now you may just watch. So this is correct. Yeah.
All right. Those ordinances are approved unanimously. So this is the one?
Yes. So this is correct.
Okay. So we've got the report of the redevelopment authority. Entertain a motion on RDA.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Steyer. Any items here to be handled separately? Yes, Alder Johnson. I just need the record to show, just one sec, sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just need to show the abstention. I'm just gonna rattle them all off, uh, because they're all tied together, and again, you all know, but, uh, because this individual, uh, oversees my compensation. So, uh, L five, P three, Q two, T eleven, it's all the same item, just different committees.
Very good. Thanks, Alder. Any items to be handled separately under RDA? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? The ayes have it, and that report has been adopted or approved. Um, next, we are taking Planning, is that correct? Uh, report P, report of the Plan Commission. Entertain a motion here.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Eck. Any items here to be handled separately? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? The ayes have it, and that report has been adopted. Um, now we're back to M, report of the Improvement and Services Committee. Motion to approve, made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Campbell. Any items to be handled separately here? Eighteen. Eighteen will be handled separately. Any others? Hearing none others, all in favor of approving, approving the remainder of that report, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? The ayes have it. The report has been approved with the exception of item eighteen.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Eck. Item was pulled by Alder Johnson. Alder, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Director Grenier, I apologize. I knew there was something else I wanted to talk to you before the meeting, but since I didn't do that, I think we'll have to do it here. Um, there, there were a couple of roads recommended to not take action on, and of course, a couple of those are in my district, and I know individuals, uh, anticipating that. Uh, can we just get an update on, I guess, why those weren't included in this year's plan? And, and what the, is it anticipated that they'll be in next year's CIP?
They will be as part, uh, they will be part of the two thousand and twenty-five CIP. There's simply not enough design time to get all of these projects done this year.
Okay. And so i- is there any opportunity, uh, for even initiation in the fall? Is the funding there?
The funding is there. It's, we don't have the staff time to get the design done because we're down to engineers, and we've already got a full slate of things out for consultant design.
So this is the only time of the year when this can be taken up? It's not possible to initiate now and still start construction in fall, for example?
Correct. We've already got projects that we're currently under design with that won't be bid until fall construction.
Okay. Uh, we obviously have some disappointed people, and I know that's not your fault. I, I get it. So, thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Uh, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Pose nay? The ayes have it. That item has been approved. Onto the report of the Protection and Policy Committee.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Items here to be handled separately?
Eight.
Eight? Any others? Hearing none others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? The ayes have it. The report has been approved with the exception of item eight. Your wish is here.
Well, yeah, um, I suppose I should make the motion first.
Sure. What's your motion?
My motion is to refer to staff.
Alder Scannell makes a motion to refer this item to staff, uh, seconded by Alder Galvin. Um, did you have some comments on that, Alder? Go ahead.
Uh, I'd just like to recap quickly, something, some of the things that happened at committee. I want to, uh, explain why this came up as it came up. Uh, it, it was years ago before COVID that I'd been approached about possibly bringing this forward as an ordinance. Uh, then COVID hit, and everything got sideways and put in the back burner, and, uh, at that time, it was, you know, I didn't think it was happening here in Green Bay. I didn't think it was happening in our state, so it just kinda stayed there. Then, a few weeks ago, um, I went to a forum on this subject on UWGB, and that's when I learned that this is happening in our state, and that's why I decided that this can no longer be on the back burner, because if it's happening in our state, it could certainly happen here, and I'd rather be proactive than reactive. So that's why this is coming when it came. And I regret that I tried to push it through so quickly. I thought, uh, it felt a little awkward bringing this and then not seeing it through all the way, but I guess that's just the way it goes with this job. You're not gonna have, you're gonna have loose ends, and, uh, staff certainly should take all the time they need. I thought that since this had been done in fourteen other cities, we could move quickly on it, but staff really needs more time. So I'm certainly fine with staff taking all the time they need. Uh, at committee, I would like to make sure that we understand what it is we're talking about here, conversion therapy. We're not talking about counseling. We're talking about a practice that every ma- a major organization here, American Psychology Association, American Psychiatric Association, American Association of Pediatrics, American Medical Association, National Association of Social Workers, and the World Health Organization, all, uh, view as abusive and discredited practices. Um, it's a practice that has a long history, and it's based on an antipathy to homosexuality. That's what the origins of all this is. And the strategies to change a person's sexual orientation were to use aversion strategies, pain, to try to convince someone that their sexual orientation was, wasn't what they believed it to be, but wasn't what it was. So that's what we're talking about here. We're talking about children and young adolescents who are forced into conversion therapies, which is anything but therapeutic. How it's also brought up that there are laws out there to deal with child abuse. But those laws have proven to be inadequate. This is happening, still happening, and we have seen in this, with this body, how even though there are laws against prostitution, as a council, as a city, we needed to come up with an ordinance to help our PD deal with unlicensed massage parlors in this city. So if there's anything we can do as a city to prevent this practice of child abuse, I think we should look into it. Last, there was a motion made to hold this because there is a lawsuit going on with one of the cities that did pass an ordinance. Um, I think if we refer this to staff, they can well handle this, and, uh, they can come back, and if they need more time, they can report that out. Right now, I believe there has enough information that staff can get working on this. So I see no reason why we shouldn't refer this to staff and see what they come up with and come back with for a future council to deal with. And I'm really, really hoping we can all agree that child abuse is wrong, and if there's something we can do, we should do it. That's all this is, that's all it's about. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Uh, we do have a number of folks who would like to speak. Motion to open the floor, made by Alder Eck.
Second.
Seconded by Alder Scannell. All in favor say aye. Pose nay? The ayes have it. The floor is open. Um, so we do have a few slips. If you haven't filled one out, um, feel free to approach the podium after we're done reading the ones that we do have. Uh, the first one that I have is Rocky.
Rodriguez.
Rodriguez, there we go.
Yeah, just approach the podium, state your name and address for us, and then, um, we give, uh, three minutes for public testimony.
All right. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right. Good evening, uh, council members. My name is Rocky, twenty-six, six-five, East Lenati Street, Green Bay. I, my name is Rocky. I'm a chapter member for Wisconsin Gays Against Grimbers. I'm here to discuss the race scenes anti-conversion law that's proposed by, uh, adoption, by Alder Scannell. Uh, conversion therapy was a practice that began in nineteen fifty. Uh, conversion therapy was a practice that began in nineteen fifty, methods such as electroshock therapy, aversion therapy, and other methods were used. Now fourteen cities here in Wisconsin ban the practice, but what's in this proposal? In this proposal, conversion therapy means any counseling, practice, or treatment performed or offered for a fee with the goal of changing an individual's sexual orientation, gender identity, including but not limited to efforts to change behaviors, gender identity, or gender expression, or to eliminate, reduce sexual or romantic attractions or feelings towards an individual of the same gender or sex. I was under the impression that if someone was having legitimate mental turmoil with their sexuality, they could seek professional counseling. But this proposal implies that they can't do that, even if they are a victim of molestation, abuse, or have an unstable home life. They no longer have the option of seeking a professional to identify mental traumas affecting their sexual orientation. The most damning part of this ordinance is the following portion. It states conversion therapy doesn't include counseling that supports the assistance to a person undergoing gender transition, or counseling that provides acceptance support or understanding of a person's, facilitates a person's coping, social support, or development, including sexual orientation. Neutral interventions to prevent or address unlawful conduct or unsafe sexual practices, as long as such counseling does not seek to change sexual orientation or gender identity. What this tells me is if a young person who might be trans are being affirmed without questions and are given preferential treatment over kids struggling to find the root of their feelings. Considering the rise in detransitioners who openly admitted that what they needed was counseling, therapy, mental health help, but what they did was go to a therapist who affirmed them, led them down a road of horrendous outcomes, these are victims of gender identity and are never taken into account. Had these detransitioners had someone who questioned them, and had them really think about what may be the root cause of their aversion, maybe they wouldn't be living a life of regret. I ask you council members to really think about this, are you willing to risk the lives of young kids who question their identity or sexuality? What if they really aren't gay or trans, or any of the other hundred identities today? Because of this ban, they won't have professionals to accurately assess them, whether they're victims of sexual abuse, physical, or mental abuse, they have no help. And without that help, they end up becoming the next Chloe Cole, the next Scott Nugent, the next detransitioner then becomes an adult now living a life of reconstructive surgery, pain, the inability to have children, the inability to ever feel an orgasm, and lastly, to forever be a financial prisoner to Big Pharma. In closing, any form of therapy that is abusive physically should not happen, and quite frankly, should be illegal. However, a therapist or doctor questioning someone's identity, or making that person question what made them that way, and work through their mental issues, and repress trauma that caused them possibly to think they are gay or trans, shouldn't be illegal. You should want them to overcome internal obstacles, what doesn't work for you may work for somebody else, and what if these were your kids? If you wanna talk about child abuse, what about all these kids that are now regretting what they went through, have no more healthy body parts, can't have kids, can no longer, uh, feel orgasms, they can't even stand up because it causes so many adverse reactions. So I just implore you guys to really think about this before you restrict certain people from having certain type of things that will work for them. That's all I have to say.
Question?
Yes. Alder Scannell, go ahead.
Do you have any statistics on the number of children who have transitioned back?
Uh, you could actually look up that in NIH, there's a bunch of studies that tell that, and you could actually just go on YouTube, type into we're detransitioners, you'll find hundreds and thousands of videos of children that were under the age of eighteen.
Hundreds?
That, sir, I'm answering your question, okay?
Trying to make clear.
That have had their healthy body parts taking off, that have been put on medications, and you, I don't know if you know this, but actually, in your districts, there are teachers that are pushing this on children. There are gender ideology things that are taught in schools, and these kids are being confused. What they really need is somebody to deep dig into their mental health issues and the stem issue of their problem. Not affirm them because they're afraid of losing their license, and be afraid that they're gonna be canceled because of some minority radical people. If you wanna help kids, you need to help all kids, and let that be the parent's decision, not yours.
Just.
You have another question?
No, no, just I want clarification, hundreds of thousands, you said?
Yeah.
Fifty-one thousand.
Fifty-one thousand.
On detrans, red.
Yeah, have you looked at him, or?
Thank you.
Have you?
Uh, sir, sir.
Thank you.
That's not, that's not.
I just wanted to check clarification, thank you.
Thanks Alder. Any other questions? All right.
Say something?
No.
Want to say?
No. We have, uh, Eric Trzwicki, who is next.
Mister Mayor, City Council, thank you for your time. I'm here today because I think we can do.
Just real quickly, share your, your address.
Yes, sorry, uh, my name is Eric Trzwicki, address six thirty-two, South Roosevelt Street, uh, Green Bay. So I'm here because I think we can do better than this. Um, I serve as the president of a neighborhood association, the vice president of another. These views that I'm presenting tonight are my own, but they're forged through working with people with whom I vote nearly opposite of, uh, national, uh, state elections all the time. The reality is that local government functions the best when we stay in our lane. It thrives when it does the job of development, infrastructure, crime prevention, and yes, it can do so creatively. It can meaningfully branch out and do the bread and butter work in a way that betters our environment and serves the struggling population. I mean, shoot, look at the great work the Sustainability Commission has done with the works of Ned and Seth and others, we've seen that, and it doesn't have to be partisan. Uh, but there are some people in this room that think that it's appropriate to use local government resources to do the work of an ideological movement. They'll justify it with different sayings, like it's defending the democracy of our country, but you have others that'll use it the opposite way, and they'll spout QAnon theories, and they'll say, that's what we should do, that'll make us patriots. All that partisan garbage does is divide us, that fractures relationships, and we need those relationships to work well for our neighborhoods to function. That's why an issue like this belongs being tackled at the state and federal level, and not driving a wedge between us in our neighborhoods. Why would I say it was as a wedge, why would I say that it's an issue? Be, really, because there are two aspects to an ordinance like this. There's a common sense aspect, shock therapy, seclusion, all the things that we know are abuse, all the things that, at committee, law enforcement said, they already have laws in the books, they can already deal with it as stands, law enforcement stated that at committee. There's the other aspect, which becomes murky, it becomes questions of, is this really counseling, or is it a Orthodox churches prayer meeting, or something along those lines? And when we try to tackle those from council, or we try to get staff to go through the weeds of determining, is this possibly a First Amendment violation? We open ourselves up to litigation when the state should be tackling it. We already have a couple issues in our community where we have litigation at the city level due to partisan bickering, and I wanna stress, I'm not here to throw anybody under the bus over that. It's controversial stuff, we don't need to fight about it anymore. We've made some mistakes, what I'm saying tonight is, we don't need to make another one. What I would say is, we shouldn't be referring this to staff, instead, we should be saying, the state can tackle it if it becomes an issue. If there becomes an issue in our community, because right now, there isn't one, if it becomes an issue, we can look at it if somehow the state has shortcomings. But when we've looked at litigation that have hap- has happened in other communities in our state, it's because those gray areas that we are not really the experts at tackling those constitutional questions. When we see some of the people that are here today to, uh, to speak, you're going to see people that are on the fringes of the left and the right ideological groundwork. We don't need that at our council meetings, we don't need that in our neighborhoods. So I would ask tonight that we, instead of adopting a motion to take this to staff, that we instead adopt a motion that says that left or right virtue signaling issues are not the job of council. Our job is to put progress over politics.
You three minutes.
Thank you, I appreciate, and the la- last one to say, this is probably the best combination of mayor council I have witnessed, and I really do appreciate your work, and thank you to the outgoing Alders.
Thanks for your testimony, any questions for our guest? All right, thank you. Alder Sawyer.
Thank you, Eric, for your testimony. So, I was at that meeting as well, and, s- so you're, you're saying that it should be at the state level, that they should take care of this, and I know there's like sixteen communities that have an ordinance like this in the books, uh, Racine has one, and I know that there's some litigation going on. I guess I look at the fact that we have, what, twenty-four communities in Brown County, so, wha- what is your thought that if we pass an ordinance in Green Bay? Wha- what would, what, what might you see happening in the other three, twenty-three communities?
Sure, so I think that the primary concern that I would have if we passed an ordinance in Green Bay is either the ordinance is redundant, in which ti- uh, case we've spent staff time, council time crafting an ordinance, it's redundant, and then other communities start looking, do we need to do this as well? So then they're putting their staff time crafting ordinances that are largely redundant, or, that the ordinance isn't fully redundant, and in the areas where it's not redundant, it then brings the target of litigation onto the city and the municipalities. If the state screws up in the way they craft the law, then the state is gonna bear the brunt of the litigation, but if our communities craft a law that is imprecise, and it causes a, like, again, an orthodox place of worship to get under investigation, so they sue, that brings the target on us. I would rather have that target put at the state level, we don't need those expenses, we don't need that usage of staff time. Our staff are fantastic, but as we heard earlier tonight, we already have shortages of different staff times unable to get things done. So, can you imagine that cascading to a bunch of communities that really can't afford that usage of their staff times? That's what I'm, that's honestly what I'm looking to prevent, and, the bickering here, I don't, I, I don't want these far-left and far-groups, uh, right groups coming and finding each little proxy issue. Alders can testify, before June last year, I sent out emails saying, let's not redo the flag debates, because again, all that stuff is just wasting our time, wasting staff time, let's just get the job of the people done.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, thank you, next up is, uh, Barbara Dorf.
Thank you, Your Honor, Alders. Barbara Dorf, thirty-three, seventy-five, Pebble Beach Court. I'm here tonight to testify in support of the motion to refer to staff, to seek more information regarding an ordinance banning conversion therapy from being practiced in the city of Green Bay. A motion to seek more information, that's what I'm asking you to support. I watched the protection and policy meeting on Tuesday, March twelfth, where Alder Scannell tried to get the committee to refer this topic to staff. No one would second that motion. I was very disappointed in the decision to receive in place on file, and for those of you who don't speak city council lingo, that means killing the entire discussion, with no opportunity for more information to be ga- gathered, that's what receiving place on file means. The proposal to ban conversion therapy in the city of Green Bay deserves to be studied and not simply ignored. Conversion therapy is not therapy in any sense of the word, the process is in reality, an involuntary sexual orientation, gender identity change effort. Every major medical association is, in this country, has condemned it, it can be incredibly harmful to the emotional health of persons undergoing this treatment. In twenty twenty-three, twenty-six providers who, who provided conversion therapy were identified in the state of Wisconsin. We need more information before deciding not to even address this issue. A comment was made at that meeting regarding not wanting staff to waste their time researching a ban on conversion therapy, yet a number of Alders in this council had no problem having staff research reasons for not raising the pride flag to provide a marginalized community support. They did this over eight months and brought it back to council three times. Another argument made was to wait and see what the results of the lacrosse lawsuit are. Well, I have here an article stating that the Supreme Court of the United States rejected a challenge to New Jersey's anti-conversion therapy law for the third time. The Supreme Court rejected the challenge to anti- there's plenty of precedent, I don't think we should worry about, about a lawsuit. Members of the LGBTQ plus community have testified to suffering significant harm from undergoing conversion therapy. I can't understand how any reasonable person could vote against seeking more information and knowledge before discussing whether or not an ordinance is needed here in Green Bay. The topic deserves to be referred to staff for research, so that a real discussion about a real issue can be had. Thank you.
Thanks for your testimony. Questions from council, Alder Burnett?
Are you okay? We've taken a question, Ms. Dorf, or two?
Absolutely, Alder Burnett.
In the, uh, in the committee meeting that you had mentioned, um, you neglected to mention that Alder Grant made a motion to hold. So the original motion wasn't to receive in place on file, it was to hold pending the investigation into that lawsuit. Uh, do you recall that motion being made?
Absolutely, and, and I don't think anyone seconded it, so.
Right, would you be in favor of holding this until we can evaluate that lawsuit to release it be?
No, I would not, I think that's wasting time again, I think that's kind of a tactic that I've seen this council use over and over again. You hold something, you put it off, you put it off, you put it off, and then, things don't get done. I think we need to get more information, so I also know that Ran- um, Alder Scannell's motion wasn't seconded either, to refer to staff.
Sure, I'm, I'm just saying, you, you mentioned motion, but you didn't mention the motion to hold, but, uh, the gentleman who spoke in the beginning, cuz I'm, obviously, have feelings on this and conflicted because, of course, you don't want children who have same-sex attraction to be tormented or abused, of course, I think most reasonable people would agree to that, however, the other side of this equation, which I think a lot of people struggle with, including the gentleman who spoke in the beginning, is, uh, gender dysphoria, so a lot of children are, uh, going through puberty blockers, testosterone or estrogen injections, and then eventual possible surgical, surgical alterations to their body. Do you believe that the detrans- do you believe that this issue should be separate between same-sex attraction and gender dysphoria that's leading to things that are irreversible?
I was actually here tonight to testify on conversion therapy, and that's really what I had done my research on, so, um, if you need more information on that, you know, I hope you would refer that to staff, because they're really capable probably of di- of a deeper dive in, into that.
Right, and I appreciate, and I, I have given a lot of thought, because I, what I hear, though, is that there's a difference between gender dysphoria and permanent alterations to a child's body and same-sex attractions, do you think that it's possible that, that we could pass one uh, conversion therapy ban in regards to same-sex attraction, but then not do anything with gender dysphoria, would that satisfy your?
I think it would probably be best to refer to staff so that they could get information on it, you know, and, and we could have a reasonable discussion based on the facts as they're gathered by our attorneys and our other staff.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions? All right, thanks for your testimony.
Thank you.
Uh, next, we have Stephen Hall.
Hello, my name is Stephen Hall, I live on nine oh eight Thrust Street in the city of Green Bay. Um, I'm here today, um, as a, uh, four-year member of the city of Green Bay. My wife and I moved here from Stevens Point, and, uh, we were looking to live between Appleton or Green Bay, we picked Green Bay because we saw the possibilities that the city has, and, the current, uh, motion that, uh, Alder Scannell, um, has proposed, um, came out in the news. I don't know that the news necessarily did a good job in giving all the details on it, but I wanna start, uh, by giving some numbers, because, um, as my aunt, who is a math teacher, says, numbers don't lie. People, uh, and children that, uh, are exposed to conversion therapy are eight times more likely to attempt suicide, six times more likely to have symptoms of depression, three times more likely to use illegal drugs, and three times more likely to get an STI. With that being said, um, cities such as Milwaukee, Madison, Racine, Sheboygan, Superior, Glendale, Appleton, West Alice, and the school district of Uclair have already passed things to, uh, deal with this issue. Most of which has happened in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and twenty twenty. This is twenty twenty-four, and we're talking about this in the city of Green Bay, we're way behind these other cities. As a member of the city, that is extremely disappointing, and, we owe our city and our members of our city the right to know that the city council cares. I watch the city council, and, as a member of the city, you guys don't realize, but you kinda have our lives in your hand every day when you walk in here, and you do the city council meetings and you decide things. It affects me, it affects my wife, it affects my neighbors. And, the notion that we can just refer this to the state of Wisconsin is hogwash, because the state of Wisconsin has already looked into this, and in fact, they're in favor of conversion therapy, and they wanna keep it on the books. So, I think we've already figured out that we can't trust our legislators in the state of Wisconsin at this point to take on this issue. But it is an issue that needs to be taken on. needs to be taken on. The notion that this issue is somehow partisan is ridiculous. It's common sense. All of these people, all of these municipalities that I just listed off, most of them passed it with majority favoring only one or two defections in most of these. I'm asking you as a member of the city to take this seriously because you are playing with city members' lives at this point. And that's all I have to say on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, sir. Any questions? All right. Thanks again. Uh, next we have James Harris.
Hello, my name is James Harris. My address is five one five East Fifth Street in Shawno, but I'm a student at UW Green Bay, which is how I keep ending up here. The conversion therapy is not something I had an opinion on until I had a son who likes dying his hair pink and playing with Barbies and has absolutely zero interest in any traditional boy activities. And the idea of someone trying to force him to change is honestly heartbreaking because he's perfect the way he is. And I know conversion therapy doesn't work. When I was in high school, I realized I was awful at talking to women, and I tried to change teams. Couple of boyfriends later, I realized you can't change who you like, no matter how badly you want to. And I do fully believe that it's a parent's decision on how to raise their child, but it is also the state's responsibility to regulate harmful practices. It's why you can no longer buy cough syrup with heroin in it. And the American Psychological Association has found conversion therapy to be harmful and have no benefits. I would rather be proactive and protect children from harm rather than be reactive and do this once it's already too late. So I'd just like to support Alder Scannell's motion to refer this to staff. Thank you.
Thanks for your testimony. Any, any questions? All right. Thank you, sir. Uh, next is Connor Tenner.
Hello, my name is Connor Tenner. Um, my address is nine twenty-four Mather Street, and I am speaking in support of the conversion therapy ban. As Councilman Scannell said, conversion therapy is a harmful practice that has been condemned by every major mental health organization in the United States. According to the American Journal of Public Health, LGBTQ youth who were subjected to conversion therapy were more than twice as likely to attempt suicide and more than, uh, to commit suicide and more than two-point five times more likely to report multiple attempts in the past year. On the flip side, um, when LGBTQ youth have at least one supportive adult in their lives, they're forty percent less likely to attempt suicide. Um, again, I think conversion therapy is an inhumane practice, and it has no place in our city. Thank you.
Thanks for your testimony. Questions? All right. Thank you. Uh, that's the end of the list that I have. If you would like to speak, um, feel free to address or approach the podium, state your name and address, and, um, we'll provide for three minutes for testimony.
Hello, my name is Gloria Eastman. My pronouns are they/them/they're. My address is six zero one Rothie Street, apartment six, Green Bay, Wisconsin. Um, I am here to support the, uh, motion to, uh, refer to staff for, uh, a ordinance to be drafted and researched. Um, I am a person that was raised in a conservative Christian home. I am a person that was raised by a minister. I am a person who was put in, uh, situation after situation where I was told and taught repeatedly that it was not okay to be an LGBTQ member. Um, and, uh, some of those were in highly emotionalized situations. Um, if you're at all familiar with Pentecostalism, um, that's kind of how they do their thing. Um, and, uh, for me, um, in that whole setup, I also attended a university that required conversion therapy. Um, if you're going to remain a student, if you're found out to be a member of the LGBT population, I watched as my peers were either completely stressed out that they were going to be found out, um, or watched as they had to go through this week after week after week. And I watched them be broken down, and I watched them continue to fail, um, in ways that they did not before they went through conversion therapy. I watched their abilities to contribute decline. I watched them process. Um, I watched them go through suicidal ideation. I listened to them. They cried in my lap. There is no reason why even the non-physically abusive versions of conversion therapy should exist. The only path forward is a path through self-acceptance, self-exploration, and affirmation. That is the only path forward. I am a productive member of society because I have embraced who I am. And I am a non-binary, bisexual, queer person, and I am happy to be that. And I wish that I would have been given the opportunity when I was young to see a therapist that actually cared about who I actually was instead of the agenda that my father put before them. My father didn't have any confirmation of my identities. I didn't have the language. And yet, he had his suspicions, and he would have done absolutely anything to make sure that I never came out. And I am so happy that I made it to thirty-three because so many of us do not. And every time that a council or a legislative body chooses not to protect our LGBT youth and our LGBT adults, you will have blood on your hands for every single one of us that kills ourselves, for every single one of us that ends up being dead at the hands of hate crimes, every single time. And if you choose not to pass this, if you choose not to create this ordinance, that is what you are doing, and you should absolutely feel that every night when you go to sleep. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions from council? All right. Uh, Alda Burnett?
Thank you for being here. Um, uh, kind of the question you heard that I asked Ms. Dorf, what are your thoughts? Because, you know, we're talking about one thing, same-sex attraction, and for a lot of people, the real concern is gender dysphoria that's leading towards long-term alterations to children that are irreversible. Detransitioning, that does exist. So it, would, in your view, a conversion therapy ban, would that include just same-sex attraction, or would that include, you know, banning the ability for a child who has gender dysphoria to seek a counselor to affirm their birth sex?
Sure. So, um, I'm a trans non-binary person, so, um, that means I do not, uh, that I do not identify with the gender I was assigned at birth. Um, I have been in therapy of many sorts since I was a small child due to many traumatic instances in my childhood history, uh, none of which had anything to do with sexual assault or any other grooming-type behaviors, as much as people would love to paint that picture. Um, the, um, the reality is, for so many of us, our gender and our, um, sexual orientation are kind of inextricably intertwined. As a non-binary person, there is not a way for me to have a straight relationship because if I am with a woman, that is a gay relationship, and if I am with a man, that is a gay relationship. So there is not a way for me to separate those things out. Um, and for a lot of people, that isn't a possibility. Um, it, it is truly, uh, a, a big overarching term, right, of LGBTQ. A lot of people use that. A lot of people like the term queer for ourselves because it encompasses multiple aspects of that, and being able to just use one word to cover a few different categories works very well. So there isn't really a way to, to separate that out. Um, I would say that, uh, for me, a person that has experienced gender dysphoria, um, I did do harmful practices to myself when I was younger. Um, I was on the wrestling team at East High School, um, and I tried to bind my chest using duct tape. Um, this is an extremely harmful practice. It can lead to things like broken ribs, um, as well as massive skin irritation and other issues. Um, so these kids that don't have access to affirming care, they're going to find ways to feel affirmed anyway, and they're going to put themselves in harm's way. And instead, I could have been handed a binder, um, that would have been safe, and I could have been taught how to use that safely so I didn't harm myself. Um, and, and truly, that's what we're looking for here. We're looking for people that are able to say, we're going to go on a journey of self-exploration, right? And some of that might lead to, yes, this is truly who I am, and some of that is not. Now, the other thing I want to address in your question is that you were talking about, um, like, uh, gender-affirming surgeries on children. That's not actually a real thing that happens very often. The only time that that happens, excuse me, I am speaking.
Sir.
You are out of order. Sir.
Sir. Sir. Sir. Continue.
So, um, so the gender-affirming care that children receive is usually therapy, right? Somebody to talk to. Uh, it is usually a haircut. It is usually clothing. Uh, that's kind of where most kids kind of sit at with supportive parents. Um, some who are experiencing, um, extremely significant symptoms of gender dysphoria may experience, may get prescribed puberty blockers. What that is, is a pause button on puberty. It's not something that permanently changes you. Uh, there is a very small amount of children who are older, like in their late teens, that, um, if they have a consistent history of showing that this is what they want, that what they want, what they've always wanted, they may go on some low dosages of some hormone therapy. Um, but honestly, there are many trans people that never take hormones. I don't take hormones. Um, I have found other ways to affirm my gender, and so I do that. Um, and then as far as surgeries go, those are truly reserved for people that are going to die. They are going to kill themselves. They have a plan. They have tried before. That is who's getting surgeries. We're literally just trying to get them to eighteen. We are trying to get them to adulthood. That is it. Um, and that's truly the situation for those kinds of therapies. Um, and that's done with usually a pretty large panel of doctors that all agree. Um, that is done with multiple letters from psychiatrists. That's done with multiple second opinions. Um, that's done with a whole lot of evidence from experts before that happens. So that's not, that's not really something that's going to be
So.
an issue.
First of all, thank you for expressing your comments and, you know, speaking, uh, your opinion on this matter. I actually disagree with a lot of what you just said, you know, based on my research and things that I have spent a lot of time looking into, and that isn't meant to disparage you or accusing you of something. I just disagree with a lot of what you're saying. Uh, let me just ask this because really, it's the issue for me is how are, how, if we pursue this as a city, how do we prevent a child from being able to see a counselor to affirm their birth sex before alterations are made from stopping puberty, which you said is, I don't know how you said it, reversed, but it's altering the natural course of a child's biological growth, which I don't know if you can fully turn back the clock on that. But let me just ask it like this, and then I'll, um, just end it here. So if you, if a parent has a child, uh, boys and girls, so if my daughter, for example, comes to me at a certain age, before age ten, and says, for whatever reason, whether true gender dysphoria, some social contagion, some peer pressure, social media, whatever it is, say if my daughter says to me, daddy, I'm a boy. Some of the more radical fringe of this movement, the, the movement would say, the second that your child says that they're the opposite gender, any talk or any discussion with a licensed therapist to help get to the bottom of the gender dysphoria that kind of helped that child overcome that, if that's what the child is able to do. Some, certain radical parts of this anti-conversion ther, this conversion therapy bans would actually say, you can't have your child see a daughter, uh, your counselor to affirm their birth sex. Do you think a parent has a right, if we were to pursue this ordinance, that a parent has a right to have their child see a counselor to affirm their birth gender if they're going through, uh, gender dysphoria?
So the psychological associations, uh, say that they should be seeing neutral therapists that simply aid in their journey of self-discovery. Um, so that is basically no, because if you were to do that, that would be, uh, that would fall underneath conversion therapy, and that would lead to higher suicidal rates. Um, so the answer is to find a neutral therapist, which almost all therapists are because that is what they are trained to do. That is a huge part of their training, is that reflective listening, um, and those kinds of things, rather than leading somebody to a particular set of conclusions. So any therapist worth their salt is going to be neutral.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak?
Hi, my name is Natalie Hoffman. I live at five five nine Rothie Street, apartment nine in Green Bay. Um, I really don't have much to say that hasn't been said already other than the fact that, listen, at the end of the day, we just want to protect kids. I want to see kids protected. You, as the council, have the power to protect children, and this ordinance is something that would protect kids. It, conversion therapy has been proven, as you've heard from other folks here tonight, to be harmful to children and puts them at even greater risk of suicide, and, and when LGBTQ plus kids are already at an increased risk of suicide, it adds to be on top of that. Like, passing this ordinance is a very simple thing, excuse me, that you can do to protect kids. That's, that's all I have to say. Any questions?
All right. Thank you.
Are you able to come back?
No. Anyone else?
Thank you. My name is Anne Parrott. I've lived in this community all of my life. I am sixty years old. I've worked with medical providers,
Just one second.
insurance company, excuse me.
Your address?
My address. Uh, I'm sorry, I just moved out to Swamaco. Thirty-one fifty-four Golden Hours Court.
Thanks.
Okay. Um, I've lived in this community the majority of my life. A few years ago, I felt the need to get out of this community at the direction it was going, which is why I moved to Swamaco. But I have worked in the medical providers community. I've worked with insurance carriers. I work in medical records. I know a lot about this. I see it coming through every day. Okay? A transgender, well, let me say it this way. The father of psychiatry, Sigmund Freud, spoke in great detail about this subject. Lacan, also another psychiatrist back in the eighties, discussed it. I would recommend reading up. Sigmund Freud stated, "A child between the ages of three and five develop based upon their environment and their parents." See where this is going? Three to five. You cannot mutilate a child. When a child who feels as transgender gets to the age of adult, if they feel that they want to surgically transition, fine, so be it. But this stuff needs to be kept out of our youth. My granddaughter, who is going to a progressive school, Leonardo da Vinci, was approached the other day, she just told me this a few days ago, by someone. She's thirteen years old. They asked her to sign a paper to join the straight gay community. Do you think this is something that belongs in our schools? I think that's the bigger issue here. We should not allow children to be mutilated at any level whatsoever. It's wrong. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Thanks. Questions? All right. Anyone else who hasn't spoken?
Hey, everybody. John Shelton, ten forty-five Webster Avenue. I didn't think I would, uh, hear about Jacques Lacan tonight, so that's fascinating. Um, I don't have a lot to say that hasn't been said before. I, I just want to elevate some of the things that some of the folks here have been saying. I'm, I'm really proud of some of my students. some of the things that some of the folks here have been saying. I'm, I'm, I'm really proud of some of my students who have, uh, come here and spoken. I wasn't planning to speak tonight. Um, but I think it's really important to elevate these things. Uh, I also want to elevate the things that my friend Gloria said. And the only other thing I would add to this is, you know, I, I've been at UW-Green Bay. I'm a professor at UW-Green Bay. I've been here for, uh, this is my eleventh year. And in one of my first few years, I had a student who I don't want to identify, but, you know, he, he told me about what conversion therapy was like for him, and he grew up in Green Bay. And he told me how traumatic it was, and about some of the mental health struggles he faced. And he was able, he, he came back to school at a, at a later age. And, uh, part of the reason for that is because of the conversion therapy that he dealt with as an adolescent. So, you know, I believe what the motion is asking is to refer this to staff and get more information about it. You know, to me, if we're gonna be the kind of community that I think everybody around here expects, that we deserve where everybody's included, we can do that. So, I don't know if you have any questions, but that's what I have to say.
Thanks, sir. Questions? All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else who hasn't spoken?
Howdy. Uh, Joey Presley, eight three seven Liebman Court. Um, there's not much I can say that hasn't been said before. I want to speak in favor of referring this to staff. Um, I think that we need a ban on conversion therapy. You know, a lot of reasons have been given. Um, it is harmful to children. Conversion therapy is, it doesn't work importantly. It doesn't work even if you believe that people shouldn't be gay. American Psychological Association, Association of Research has shown that it is not effective. All it does is traumatize people, young people. Um, and I think this council has an opportunity now to really say to queer people in this community that we stand with them, um, to say to people who are considering moving into this community, who see that Human Rights Campaign ninety-six percent LGBTQ rating, um, uh, see that and say, "Well, maybe this is a place we want to live." Um, we've done some harm to the queer community in the past. I think this is an opportunity to really say that, uh, we stand with the queer community, um, and that we are affirming them, and we are affirming their right to exist. Um, and, yeah, uh, it's, it's up to y'all. Um, so I really hope you will vote in favor of this. Thank you.
Thanks. Any questions? All right. Thank you. Anyone else? I think we got.
Jesse Simcox. I'm the Wisconsin Chapter Leader of Gays Against Groomers. Um, I find this very ironic.
Your ad, address?
Eight three six White Pine DePere. Um, we work a lot with detransitioners, young adults who are transitioning as minors. I'm not sure if you guys were aware, but last week was Detransitioner Awareness Week. Every Tuesday afternoon, we have a spot on Progressive News Radio, so we are not a far-right group. We reach out to everyone. We're made up of everyone of all different political views of, uh, gay, lesbian, bisexual, and transsexuals. So, we talk to all these different detransitioners, and this is what a young girl, uh, shared. And you could, and you could actually, like, look this up, listen to our podcasts. Um, her name is Prisha. And, uh, this was done at UW, and she was a minor, so they are doing this on minors. She was affirmed as not so much a transsexual, but whatever these different identities are, like, uh, what was non-binary or queer. Um, "My genitals," and this is Prisha, Prisha, when she was applying to the radio show, and this is how we got her on the radio show. "My genitals were irreversibly ruined as a minor with chemical intervention." So, she wasn't surgically mutilated. She was given the puberty blockers and then the cross-sex male hormones. "I never had bottom surgery. I still deal with vaginal and pelvic atrophy, frequent infections, urinary incontinence, vaginal tearing and bleeding, and painfully enlarged clitoris." On that same podcast for Detransitioner Week, several young women who aren't even twenty-one yet, who were transitioned as minors by adults who affirmed their identity, whatever the identity was. I mean, we have, we have kids in Manitowoc, we have kids identifying as cats, you know, and teachers that put litter boxes in the classroom up in Door County. But anyways, these young girls who were medically transitioned on these, on these chemicals that they're giving out, like Flintstone vitamins, have enlarged clitorises. They can't even wipe without, like, their anatomy bleeding. It's very uncomfortable. And that's just the girls. You don't even want to know what's going on with the boys. When you give males these testosterone suppressants like Lupron, which states who have, I don't know the exact term, like the death penalty, whatever the correct term is for that, they get, yeah, they give this drug to convicted pedophiles. It's chemical castration, and then they pump them full of estrogen. So, we had a Jewish doctor, who was a whistleblower, speak out that this affirming their identity is one giant pipeline. So, you start affirming this, and then you start giving them the pills, and then it leads to the surgeries. UW and then Milwaukee Children's are in fact doing these surgeries on minors. You can look that up. It's even on their website. So, it's one giant pipeline, and it starts with just affirming delusion instead of affirming reality. We see ourselves in these children. Growing up, I wanted to be a girl. And if there was predatory adults or adults that weren't grounded in reality that affirmed that delusion, because I liked to play with my sister's pom-poms and paint my nails and wear eyeliner as a teen, I would have been upset that, uh, I couldn't transition with all this social contagion going on. But that being said, my parents brought me to a psy, a psychiatrist, because I was getting bullied at school. There's not, we're not encouraging bullying. I mean, that psychi, that psychologist, looking back, he never talked to me about sexuality. He never talked to me about, perhaps, maybe you can be a girl or a cat or one of the other fifty-eight different genders. That psychologist talked to me about resiliency, and...
Sir, your, your three minutes has expired.
Okay, so you see where I'm getting with this?
Any questions for, for our guests? Uh, Alder Hutchinson, then Alder Weary?
Okay, uh, what is the definition of detransitioner? This is the first time I heard it.
Yeah, so that's actually a really good question. So, detransitioners are, you, transitioners are like male to female, female to, to, like, people who medically transition. And detransitioners are people like the young girl's testimony that I just read. Prisha, or like Chloe Cole, or the hundreds that are coming out of the woodwork and fifty-one thousand and joining on a Reddit thread of them, all sharing their, you know, stories and building a self-help group. So, detransitioners are the young adults who regret, um, transitioning.
Okay, so you're not in the mode of tran, detransitioning somebody. You went through it, they went through it themselves.
So, I, I'm not sure if I understand the question.
Well, detransitioner, in my head, is someone who's trying to bring someone back. They, they made a transition, and now they're bringing them back, but you're saying, no, it's the actual people who actually transitioned, and now they're coming back.
Correct, because of health problems, like enlarged clitorises, you know, the males, they don't, they're, it's sexual mutilation. You know what I mean? So, and, and, and if, we have a couple doctors and functional medicine doctors here in the Green Bay area that work with a lot of these detransitioners.
Okay, well, thank you for that education. I didn't know.
Yeah, sorry. It's a, it's a touchy subject.
Do you have any idea what the ratio is of people going through detransitional, going there and coming back versus those who just transitioned and that's it?
So, according to the doctor, the Jewish doctor that we just spoke to, um, this is such a new phenomenon of affirming all these different genders and doing this on children, that there's not enough data yet to show, but, I mean, they're coming out of the wo, woodwork. I mean, we, there's going to be like a tidal wave of these young adults. I mean, we're already seeing, I mean, almost fifty-two thousand just individuals, detransitioners, join Reddit. The UK just banned this. Uh, Norway, Sweden banned it. Twenty-two states have banned, you know, these...
They banned what? I'm sorry.
Ban, banned these procedures, like puberty blockers, cross-sex hormones on minors.
Okay, in the United States, is it legal to do physical transitioning on minors?
Of course. It's going on right here in Wisconsin.
What do you mean by, I mean, I was under the impression, again, I'm not educated in this. I was under the impression a minor could not undergo physical changes as a minor to transition.
No, um, if you look at Wisconsin right now, wrote an article on it, and if you even go to UW, um, Hospital's website, they actually say right on the main page that they transition minors. Like, top surgery, like they'll remove the mammary glands and, um, girl's chest at UW. You could go right on the main page. It says that. Now, they will say that, oh, well, they pass, you know, some kind of psychiatric evaluation, but what we're seeing from these whistleblower doctors are that the, it's such loose hurdle, like, short hurdles to climb over, that a lot of this is, you know, just straight-up greed from the medical industry. Or maybe perhaps there, people do think that this is the right thing to do, and then they regret, and they're like, okay, we need to pump the brakes on this, like the other twenty-two states who have done this, and then several, several countries in the EU, and then most notably, the UK has just banned these procedures on children. And that even includes just giving out the, the puberty blockers and cross-sex hormones.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right. Thanks. Anyone else who hasn't spoken?
Your honor?
Alder.
I have a question for...
Okay.
Anne, okay, there we go. Uh, thank you for coming. Um, you mentioned that these types of issues drive a wedge between people. Can you elaborate on that?
Well, I kind of think, at one level, the speakers before me sort of provided that. Um, we, we saw how some people were interrupting Gloria, not treating Gloria very nicely. Uh, we see cases where, um, you know, in, in these, in these heated issues, it brings a lot of people who can't even pronounce the alder who's creating the issue, uh, the ordinance proposal name correctly, because they're otherwise not interested in our local politics, not interested in the way our government gets things done. But when there's a wedge issue that happens, then they care. And this meeting has taken a lot of time. Um, when we look at the issues that are brought up, we really, again, have two things. We have non-controversial aspects, which are already illegal, and we have the controversial wedge parts, which bring people to this room. There's a lot of discussions about things that had nothing to do with even the ordinance that Alder Scanell is proposing, because this isn't really getting into a lot of the transitioning issues. Um, however, what I think that this, the testimonies before prove is that we are out of our depth as a city to be tackling wedge issues, because we don't have the time for, let, next meeting, a different alder could bring an entirely different issue that is a wedge on the other side of the political spectrum, and we could spend the entire meeting tackling that. And, and when I work with local people in our neighborhood associations, heck, the treasurer for my neighborhood association is running for a seat that my dad once held, of the opposite party. But what I've learned, working with neighbors, is that we get along famously. I think this guy would do a fantastic job in the Senate seat, even though he's the opposite party of me. And why? Because it's neighbors working together and not focusing on wedge issues when they're not what we have to deal with. I have, I have neighbors that have a, uh, you know, F the President sign in their yard. I have neighbors that have the, the gay trans flag sign in their yard. And what I look at is, I don't see people with the American flag in their yard anymore. And we need to get past these wedge issues and work together. And you're seeing what's happening tonight. People are starting to get, you know, uncivil with each other. That's not appropriate. It's not, it's not appropriate to be rude to Gloria for sharing, uh, you know, a, a, a painful story. We need to respect that, and you see that not happening. Why? Because wedge issues drive people to do outlier behaviors, and we just cannot afford to have that as a city.
Okay, thank you.
I've got the American flag in my yard, just for the record. Anyone else who'd like to speak? All right, I'll entertain a motion. Motion to close the floor, maybe by Alder Scanell. Second by Alder Campbell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it. The floor is closed. We have a motion by Alder Scanell. Uh, yes, Alder Scanell, and then Alder Morgan.
Um, if I may, there's nothing about what I'm proposing that is gender-affirming, that mandates gender-affirming anything. What I'm proposing is that the city look into and see what can be done, if it can, anything can be done, because we know sometimes the laws we have aren't enough. Again, let me stress, we have laws against prostitution. That wasn't enough to deal with our unlicensed massage parlor issue. If there's more we can do against anyone who is pushing any agenda of gender identity or sexual orientation, I don't care which way it's going, it's abuse. And I think it's a mis, uh, a mistake to wait until it's happening in our city when it's already happening in our state. That, that just, that was the red flag for me. When I saw it was happening in our state, and more numbers than I care to count, it could easily turn up here. Why are we gonna wait till it happens here before we take action, if we can take any action? Let's refer this to staff. Staff will come back. They'll do the research. We won't have to listen to John GQ spout off their opinions. Staff will go to the professionals, to the statistics, to what's going on around the state. And yes, I agree, it'd be fantastic if the state would take this up. The state isn't gonna take it up. They've, it's been pushed on, their agenda twice, and they've shelved it twice, without any discussion or vote. So, that's why municipalities are doing this. I, I agree, this sucks. I don't think it's right for us to have to do this, but I think it's irresponsible not to. Now, all I'm asking, refer to staff. Staff will do the work, come back, then we can have an intelligent discussion. And for me, it's anyone with an agenda, whatever that agenda, that pushes a, a gender identity, gen, sexual orientation, is wrong. That's abuse. And to force a child or a, uh, young adult into any kind of program that does that is, is just flat-out wrong. So, all this gender-affirming stuff, I, I don't know where that's coming from. There's nothing in what I'm proposing that mandates we gender-affirm, do any gender-affirming. Just the opposite. We're not going, it's neutral. It's to prevent child abuse if we can. Period. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Morgan?
At committee, I was the one that, uh, made the motion to, uh, receive and, uh, put on file. And my reasoning on this is, uh, I believe that, uh, we have laws that should cover this kind of stuff. I've been hearing that there's fear that children are gonna have electroshock therapy. They may be beaten. They may be, uh, made to stand for lengthy times or not be able to have food or water, stuff like that. That's actually the stuff we're hearing for four weeks straight now in Manitowoc County, what happened to that poor little three-year-old. And the reason that those people are in jail is, my belief is, our laws, the state laws under nine forty-eight point zero-three, reference physical abuse of children, cover any of these things that would be illegal. Most of them would be felonies. Uh, the term in this, the definition, it means conduct which creates a situation of unreasonable risk or harm to and demonstrates a conscious disregard, disregard for the safety of a child. There are, uh, most of the laws in Wisconsin's cover children sixteen or fourteen and what they can have done or not done. Uh, at fourteen, you can consent, you, I, no, I should say, you are not allowed to seek medical treatment unless you have a parent or guardian who must agree, and it must be in writing, if you want to have mental health treatment. But at the same time, the laws have given them the opportunity to go to your county mental health review officer and have them order you to get treatment like that. So, there are options. There's also laws for failure to act to per- There's also laws for failure to act to prevent bodily harm. And that is, a lot of that, police can't enforce the laws we have in the books sometimes if they're not reported, but we do have laws that cover all that. There's also laws about causing mental harm to a child. That's all under 948.04. Our Press Gazette recently talked, Natalie Ebert, in her February 9, 2024 story, said that Senate Bills 704 and Assembly Bill 729 are trying to allow unaccompanied minors to consent to and receive medical, dental, behavioral health care in excesses without a parent or legal guardian. So our state is working to try to make it where children do have a few more rights. And there is also coverage in there that, as I said, if a parent is not welcome to receiving your request, that's when you can also petition, and it offers different ways that you can get this treatment. So it is my belief that there are laws that would cover the welfare of the children. There are laws that would make the parents responsible, as would the therapists that would try to do some of these items would be responsible. And I guess, and final, I don't want people to think I have any issues with that. I have several friends in the LGBTQ community. I traveled many years as an entertainer. I shared motels with them with no issues. They had no issues with me, I had no issues with them. In my following career, that I had for 40 years, I supervised and worked with a lot of them in that community. I actually was responsible years to decide if these people got hired or not. And surprisingly, even to myself, I actually gave them the higher scores many times because they were so well-prepared and so professional. And even now, I work with a lot of people in the community. I, two years in a row, I invited one of my daughter's friends, who is a member of this community, over for Thanksgiving, and I have no disrespect for anyone that thinks I'm against it because of that. I, matter of fact, this gentleman was one of my daughter's bridesmaids last fall, and we spoke all night. We made several announcements about if I had a nurse on, I'd be proud, it would be him. And so I want people, I'm not against this, I just think we have enough laws that cover this. I don't think we need to stop someone that might want to transition back, or is questioning, what are they thinking? I don't think we should be able to ban a therapist from helping those people, and I'm sure if we do do some kind of a ban like this, every therapist is going to tell them when they walk in the door, I'm not allowed to do any discussion with you on this. So you're taking away treatment that maybe somebody else could be valued. That's it.
Thanks, Alder. Just a reminder, this is a motion to refer. Alder Hutchinson?
Thank you, Mayor. This morning I woke up and I was totally in the camp of the second speaker of, this is a state issue. And I was thanking Alder Scannell for making this a long meeting tonight, because I knew this was going to happen, but, you know, if you're on your way out, what the heck? So in the morning, my wife and I have coffee, and we both, for this morning, we both had our computers in our lap, which is not normal, and we both were looking up this issue. And if you look up conversion therapy Wisconsin, just put it in the search, there is a site that looks at data, tons of data on this issue. And we spent the next 45 minutes scrolling, and I would read something and read it out to her, and she would read something and read it out to me, and we were learning. We were like, oh, my gosh, I didn't know it was this thing. I had no idea. I had no idea. So then, as we talked about it, I realized, how could I be so ignorant? I'm still learning tonight, words and what happens and all that, those things. And so I have to admit, I'm no longer in the camp of where we shouldn't look at this as a city. I'm in the camp is, what is the harm in asking staff to get information on this? Okay? As Alder Morgan was going through these laws, boy, it would be good to have a summary of the protection of these children that exists. He did a good job reading them off. I would like it to be more formal, from, from a perspective of where, where do we sit? I didn't know there was a number of cities that already went through this and adopted these non-conversion, you know, laws in their cities. There's counties that have done it. There, so, and I don't know, really, at this point, what the right thing to do is. And to just say, stop, is a disservice, I think, to our citizens. I, I'm thinking of my district, too. I want to do the right thing. I don't like bullies. I don't like people being put in a spot, and I just don't know what spot the LGBTQ+ people are in without knowing this information. I really think we need to know more, and that's why I was asking questions. So I am really in the camp right now to give this to staff, to bring us up to date. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Other questions or comments from council? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. Alder Johnson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor.
Yep.
So I wasn't, like many others, too, I wasn't really intending to speak on this. I, I kind of shared what I wanted to share, protection policy, and I still support my position there. I do think that this is better handled at the state, but the reality is, the state has just chosen not to take it up. As I brought up, at the committee level, we could, we could pass a ban here, and then it would be just as easy to, to provide, you know, this, this, I don't even want to call it a service, but, I mean, this, this treatment, whatever you want to call it, right? It's, it could easily happen in DePere, in Ashwabanon, in Alaway, and everybody else around us if they don't pass a similar ban. So that's why it, it is better treated as a state issue, but in absence of a state, state ban, I do think it is something that, that does deserve a little bit of time. And when you see 14 communities that have taken issue on this, I think there's something there. And it's not uncommon, you know, for the state to almost be pushed into certain decisions, because you see these, these issues or these challenges bubble up at a local level, and then they kind of, you know, hit a tipping point, and, and, and the state will finally intervene or take action. The reality is, you know, I think this is a spectrum issue, and I, you know, I'm most concerned, in particular, about some of the more severe ends of that, that spectrum. Certainly, I would not sit here before you today and say that we ought to ban an ability for a child to seek therapy. I don't think that, that's what anyone's talking about. And, and I do think it's important to acknowledge that we don't have an ordinance before us. And so I just, I want to bring that up, because after hearing some of the feedback from, from members of our community, this isn't an actual ordinance. This is just whether or not we want to spend some time and refer it to staff and have them bring back information to council to learn a little bit more, and then ultimately form an ordinance if we so direct it. And so I, I do think there's merit in that conversation. I, I get, you know, it, it's, I, I get the point that maybe it's a wedge issue. I think for, for others, it is certainly not. And, and the reality is, I think one of the most frustrating, yet one of the most rewarding parts of this job is that we have to be experts on every topic. And I say it's frustrating, because we all know we are not, and it's rewarding, because it puts us into positions where we have to learn and educate ourselves to be the most informed representatives that we can be for our constituents. I mean, not a single one of us sitting around this table right now can engineer a road. Well, maybe Hutch can, yeah. Well, you know, most of us don't know how to arrest a person, but Morgan and Galvin can, right? Some of us, you know, don't know how to tell history story, stories like Story Boy over there, but, but the reality is, I think, just collectively as a council, we are always wise with how we approach certain issues, and when we don't know enough, we ask for more information, we seek answers. And I think it's important that we do that on an issue that is clearly affecting so many people, you know, even if it hasn't come here locally, it is affecting people. I haven't, I've, I've heard Alder Scannell has said it, and I've heard others say that it is happening in Wisconsin, right? I haven't seen the data, but I'm not opposed to finding out where the data is, right? I, like, let's get that, let's talk about it, and, and let's make sure that this doesn't become an issue, because the, I, I've had several of my, my constituents reach out to me that are certainly in opposition, you know, of this, meaning they, they want to see this referred, they're, they're in opposition to conversion therapy. And it's just, it's, it's interesting to me how we've kind of gone off a little bit tangentially on this other topic of, of gender-affirming care and surgery, because that's not what, what's being referred here. I appreciate the intertwined nature of this issue, but I'll tell you, for me at least right now, I mean, I'm, you know, quite frankly, I don't support conversion therapy any more than I do gender-affirming surgery, you know, but conversion therapy is what is in front of us, and, and I'm happy to explore that a little bit further, and make sure that we're doing right by the residents in our community that have been negatively affected by this issue.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Galvin, then Alder Grant?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm in the, the same boat as Alder Johnson and Alder Hutchinson. I listen to people talk here, the stories they had to tell, painful on both sides of this issue. And it's, it's, it's not easy listening to what these individuals have gone through or that people are talking about have gone through. I will also admit, I did not understand everything that was being said out there. It was, could they have some of the other alders asked for explanations about exactly what people were talking about? So I want more information. You know, this is like when we went down that fluoride issue. And I mean, that was a lot of testimony, that was a lot of time, two times I've been through that, and I'm still not sure I understand exactly everything that goes into fluoride and how it affects us, and/or positively and negatively. But like Alder Johnson said, we have to make these decisions. And so the only way I can make a decision whether to move forward or away from this is to have staff research it, bring the professionals in, get the professional information that we can look through, digest, and make a decision. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Grant?
I kind of have a question for clarification, because in the recent, excuse me, ordinance that was brought to us, it does say conversion therapy means any counseling. Because now I'm hearing mixed remarks that it's not about counseling. So can I get clarification on that?
Alder, is that a question for Alder Scannell?
Sure.
I just brought that in, because I just grabbed one of the ordinances that we could use as a base, and I'd hope that we could go through it quickly. We can't. So staff can look at that and determine what's the best course procedure for us as a city. They can come back with more information on everything. If you have a query, that's what we want, you want staff to look at something, now's the time to make that known to staff. We're going to refer this to staff, look into this specifically, as well as you're looking into the whole thing in general. For myself, I thought that was an exception, that, not a mandate, the counseling. So that counseling isn't considered conversion therapy, is, was my understanding of it. But again, staff will look at that and certainly come back with, I, I think, I don't know how you could ban counseling. I, I, the way I read that law is, counseling was accepted. What's, what we're driving at here are practices that are abusive to children and young adults. That's it. That's the focus. Everything else, we can massage around and put into place however we think we should. For me, there are definitely practices that are happening. The laws in place aren't apparently effective enough to deal with it. Maybe we can't come up with something that's going to help us, like we did with prostitution and our unlicensed massage parlors. But what if we can? What if we can? How are we going to know until we refer to staff? So let's refer to staff and find out what we can do, what the possibilities are, and then, I'm passing the ball, I'm throwing it, so the next council's got to catch it, they get the hot potato, and they can decide what's best for the city. That's all. Thank you.
So you are correct, it does say conversion therapy means any counseling, and then it explains all the different other things, but it says, in order, in effort to change behavior. So it actually is eliminating counseling if it's to change behavior. Conversion therapy does not include counseling if it affirms it. So you're limiting the conversation in one direction, and I think a point that I, a resident made was, if you stop the conversation in one way, you're taking a resource away from children who may need that resource and may not go down the next path, which was the other, the long-term effects, the next level. You're going to take a resource away in one direction, and I think that's very harmful as a city government to be deciding that.
I, I, but I did state that I believe, as, as it was brought up by one person, it should be neutral, and that we should be, and that I believed in neutral, that I did not support either pushing the, the needle either way. So we should be able to come up with language that supports neutral counseling, as opposed to counseling that would be, could end up being abusive.
So how would you expect a counselor to handle a situation where there was trauma, and they may need to talk about not necessarily affirming it? To me, that's a very, how, who's going to determine what was in the guidelines and what's not? That's a very, as a city government, I may think I'm being neutral, but someone could accuse me of not being neutral. That is very, a very scary idea for counselors to have to worry about, again, especially when children possibly have gone through trauma and may need to really talk about, why are you feeling this way?
Your Honor.
Alder.
Your Honor.
Yeah, we don't, yeah.
We're going down a rabbit hole. This is a point of order. We're talking about whether to refer this to staff. We're dissecting something that staff hasn't even recommended that we adopt. So this is why we want to send it to staff. You're asking questions about things that we can't make a decision on right now.
The, the point is well-made. It's a motion to refer, and just a reminder, we don't have conversations directly between and among alders. Comments are made to the chair. So Alder Grant, do you have anything final?
No.
Okay, thank you. We've got Alder Story, then Alder Eck.
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, listening to Mr. Griswicki before, you know, I just, you know, asked him some questions, and he was talking about wedge issues, and I can see this potentially being kind of a wedge issue. I can also see referring it to staff as well. So I, I'm in the middle on this, as I have been on many issues over my 12 years as a moderate.
Surprised to hear that.
Yeah, you know? And I, I don't, I won't miss that completely. I got to admit, okay? Just, just for the record. Actually, I wanted to ask Attorney Bungert, do you feel that if we eventually pass an ordinance like this, that there could be potential legal issues? Mr. Griswicki did mention that there is one community in the state that has this issue going on legally, and I guess I fear that a little bit as well. I really wish the state would step up, but as Alder Scannell said, you know, they're not really, they're kind of dropping the ball on that. And we, and this should be a statewide issue, I feel, but we got 16 other communities that are dealing with this, so that, that's my initial question, attorney.
Sure, so I, I think that, that logic can be applied to pretty much any act that the city takes, where avoiding liability entirely would, the only surefire way of doing that is, is basically not, not doing anything at all. But, you know, the fact that there is a pending case currently with the city of La Crosse, that's something definitely that we'll look into to see exactly the way that theirs was structured, and kind of the, the issues that came up. If anything, it'll be kind of a helpful situation, because we'll be able to kind of highlight the arguments that are being made by the parties, and kind of how the court views those arguments, and, and in terms of what the current laws are, and from a constitutional perspective. So our goal will be to, to obviously research and, and to mitigate those liability exposures to the best of our ability.
Okay, that's, that's fine. Okay, that's, that's fine. I, you know, I kind of mimic what Alder Galvin said too. We are going down the rabbit hole on a few of these things, and, and we are not experts, as Alder Johnson says, on everything. We'd like to be, but we're not. After listening to all the testimony and such, you know, I really wished, you know, I know Alder Morgan said that there are plenty of laws out there that take care of this, that we can just rely on that. But for myself, I don't know every one of those rules and regs and laws. So I think referring it to staff, would at least get some of that out, informational wise. And I, also, I got to remember, we got to remember that we have a new council coming, and they should look at this as well. So I'm all, I'm all for referring it. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Eck, then Alder Burnett?
Okay, so, and, and I did speak a little bit at the committee, that abuse is abuse, and we all know that that's illegal. It has to be reported. You know, there's things that don't always come to light right away. So, by referring to staff, and, and I would like to confirm what exactly, because everybody says refer to staff. What exactly was his motion? Just, can you repeat it?
I think the motion was to refer this item to staff for further study.
Because the original was for an ordinance to, possible action to adopt in one reading, which obviously we didn't even have an ordinance, but, so basically, it's looking to create an ordinance. So, what exactly is staff doing? That's what I'm asking. Okay? So it would be probably to work on drafting an ordinance. So the ordinance will either be redundant because abuse is already illegal, the practices, or wade into banning counseling sessions, which could also get us sued. So it does list counseling in the example that Alder Scannell provided, and I'm definitely not for that. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Burnett?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just want to, I want to take exception. I don't think Alder Galvin or Story that you're correct. I think Alder Grant was going down an appropriate hole here, because what we see, and is very clear to me, is that a lot of council members don't know the difference between conversion therapy in regards to sexual orientation and gender-affirming care, or treating gender dysphoria. They're, they're combined in a lot of these ordinances. Alder Scannell forwarded the recined ordinance to the Protection and Policy Committee, which a member of that committee forwarded to me. There, in that ordinance, it talks very clearly about conversion therapy means counseling. Any counseling practice or treatment performed or offered for a fee with the goal of changing the, the individual's sexual orientation or gender identity. Appleton, a few years ago, passed it. It was sexual orientation and gender identity. La Crosse includes gender identity. So I think Alder Grant was kind of fleshing that out. We're saying refer to staff, and some council members believe that it's only regards to sexual orientation. But if you follow the pattern that other municipalities are, are exploring, that that is including gender dysphoria or gender confirmation, or, and that could include, you know, a trajectory towards social acceptance, which we, of course, want children to be loved and cared for. However, the next stage is blocking puberty, then it's cross-sex hormones, and then it's possibly surgical alteration, which is irreparable. So I think for a reasonable person, when you see more and more of this stuff become public discussion, as it should be, there are children throughout this country that have been led down a path towards permanent changes to their body that they regret. That is detransitioners. And there is a growing movement of this, and the speakers are correct. There are foreign governments and states that are starting to reject this because they see the consequences this has for children. Children who maybe at 10, 12, 14, 8, 17, maybe at that moment, they wanted to conform to opposite gender of their birth. However, they will possibly regret it later. And so when we put things in place that ban conversion therapy, we have to separate, you know, sexual orientation from gender conversion. And, and it, we should not be removing the option for parents who love their children far more than any other person in the world. Of course, they're bad parents. We know this, right? Laws protect those children from the bad parents, or at least we hope. However, I think we have to weigh the social cost if we go too far. And there's a growing evidence, growing body of evidence to support that certain children who are later adults or later on stage of adolescence that regret the progression towards their current state of transition. So, no, I don't think Alder Grant was in any way wrong. She's just pointing out that we're talking about this, thinking that they're too separate, but they're not. It's, a lot of the ordinances include gender identity as well as sexual orientation. I'm just pointing that out. So I think a lot of council members are confused, and she was kind of fleshing that out for us to kind of get to the bottom, like, we don't know what we're talking about here. It's very clear to me. So, thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Weary, and then Alder Galvin for a second time?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think for our city, really, to be a true leader, and in the interest of helping all children in these, you know, gender-related issues, and there's many of them, as we've heard, I move to amend the motion to include also exploring banning hormone therapy and sex reassignment surgery, where the sole purpose would be gender reassignment. Thank you. Do we have a second to that?
A second for Alder Weary's motion? Seconded by Alder Morgan. Conversation on that. Alder Scannell?
I think a flat-out ban is unwise. Certainly for staff to pursue looking into that is fine, but a flat-out ban, there are, there is time, there, all right, let's look at the, some of the statistics. Transsexuals make up 1% of our population, 1%. Of that population, less than half a percent regret transitioning. So you want to ban a procedure that 99.5% benefit from?
Alder Weary withhold your comments?
Yeah. Staff, staff can come up with that, okay? That, that's what I got. Just a, just a quick search. That's what I came up with. So, staff can certainly dig in and find out if I'm right, wrong, or how right or wrong. But I think a flat-out ban is, is, is a terrible mistake for staff to look into the, the, how to best proceed in protecting children from abusive practices, whatever they are, is appropriate. I think that's the parameters I support. I don't believe a, a flat-out ban i- is appropriate at all. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. So we have a few more folks still in the queue. Alder Galvin and Alder Hutchinson. This is obviously on a different motion. So Alder Galvin?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Could, could someone repeat Alder Weary's amendment? Alder Weary?
I moved to amend the motion to include exploring banning hormone therapy and sex reassignment surgery, where the sole purpose would be gender reassignment. To explore it. Just to have staff look at it, bring it back, much like we're doing with the other one.
Alder Galvin?
All right. On, on that, and that's all we're, all we're commenting on is...
Just one second. Just one second.
If I omitted the word minors, that's what, it was for minors. Not adults. Adults are free to do whatever they please. We're talking about minors. That's what we were talking about before. That's what I'm talking about, are minors.
Thanks, Alder Weary. Alder Galvin?
Not the kind that dig in the ground.
As I was, I was going to comment, a response to Alder Burnett's comment about us being mistaken. The reason why I want this referred to staff is because I want professionals to get professional opinions, professional statistics, something that we can all look at and see where the information's coming from and what it means. It's obvious a lot of us don't understand everything to do with this issue, including Alder Weary's amendment. The more information we can get, the better off we're going to be able to make a decision down the road, whether we go one way or the other, go in a circle, whatever the result is. So I, I'm in favor of that referral to staff, so I can figure out exactly what everybody is talking about. But I don't want people throwing out data that they're pulling off their laptops and everything else. I don't know where it's coming from. I don't know if it's been sourced properly or anything else like that. And that's why I want staff to get professional information. Not stuff pulled out of God only knows where. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Hutchinson on this motion?
I'm in favor of the motion because of the word explore. I would try to widen it even further, explore all major issues regarding this issue, because I can tell by this discussion, we're all kind of at a loss where, what things are. And so, I am not looking for an ordinance generation. I'm really looking for just the, the major items involved with developing an ordinance of this nature, and, and references, and definitions, and that type of thing. So we can then move forward, if we so choose, with, you know, a law or an ordinance. So, I'm in favor of explore, exploration of this issue across the board. What is it? What are we doing? What can we do? What's a bad idea? Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Alder. Any other comments on Alder Weary's motion? Alder Morgan?
Well, I just want to say, when I did make the original motion on the committee, I said over and over, no one was showing us medical proof or scientific proof, as Alder Scannell liked, scientific proof, that there is an issue here. And I know there are some things, I mean, thank God, I've been lucky through my career. I, I've stopped 12 people from killing themselves. And one of them, I know, has gone through years of shock therapy. And now she's pretty good. She's happy. She's in a good place. She isn't talking about it anymore. And so there are some things that are good in some of this stuff, but if it's against the law, it's my belief it's against the law. I would be happy to have us research this more. We've only got 28 days, and we're going to have at least three, or possibly more, people sitting in these seats in 28 days. So, nothing's going to get done before, before we have the new committee.
Okay. Thanks, Alder. Any other comments on Alder Weary's motion? Alder Burnett?
For Robert's order, would a motion to hold supersede Alder Weary's motion?
Attorney Bungert? You have any other comments before?
Yeah, I mean, I think we're just spinning our wheels and refer to staff to explore it all, because if we're going to be banning things and doing different things, it's a deeper discussion, and, and I'm willing to have it. I'll speak about this stuff for a long time, because I've been kind of preparing for this. But if a motion to hold supersedes Alder Weary's motion, I'll, I'd just like to make a motion to hold until the second meeting in May. Okay. Motion to hold until the second meeting in May.
So the answer from Attorney Bungert was that yes, the motion to hold takes precedent. Alder Burnett makes a motion to hold this till the second?
Meeting in May.
Second meeting in May. Seconded by Alder Morgan. Discussion, further discussion on that motion?
Yeah, it just gives enough time for the new council to talk this over with their constituents, public hearings, Alder Scannell, all due respect. And I, I think your efforts are sincere. I do, I believe that. When you talked at the Protection Policy Committee, and I think it's here. You wanted to push it through so you could own it because it was your idea. I respect that completely. However, you know, single reading, a couple readings, we really got to flesh this thing out. Each council member can go to their, their professionals on their own. They can talk to people. They can discuss it with some of the members who spoke here today. I, I see no need to belabor this. A motion to hold, let the new council deal with it, and give enough time to them to fully discuss it and do their own research before they decide whether or not they want to send it to staff for ordinance creation. So, that's all.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Morgan?
I would like to ask, well, I'm, first, I'm going to say I'm going to vote yes, probably, to Alder Burnett's thing. I would like to ask Attorney Bungert, I know we've discussed it once before in the last two years, if we did not approve this and all that, we could actually bring it up again as a different, say, with a different title or something like that? Or can we not ever bring this back up?
So it depends on what the action is that's taken by council. So if, if the action is to deny the item outright, then that item is done for that council term. If the motion is to receive and place on file, which is laying on the table, there's a way of bringing it back in front of council. But if it's received and placed on file, and then you bring an identical item back, that would be out of order. So it, it, it depends, entirely depends on what the, what the action of council is, so.
Would have to be tweaked a little bit if it's...
Right. There's parameters as to, like, what, what, so it, it's very fact-specific as to what it looks like and what it's trying to accomplish.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. So the motion is to hold from Alder Burnett. Any other? Alder Scannell?
Does that include the amendment, then? Is that included in the hold?
The item itself is, is being held.
Just the item itself?
As it stands right now.
As it stands right now, without the amendment. Okay. Sorry, I thought I might make sure.
Any other comments on that? Questions? Alder Hutchinson on the motion to hold?
Right. So, without the hold, we'd be asking staff to research this. With the hold, we're telling them just to stand still. Don't research it. We all know it needs to be researched. So what you're basically saying is, let's just hold and let the other new council deal with what we have instead of us. And I don't think there's any way each of us going and talking to professionals and all this type of thing. We would get the same information as our staff would give us with backup and references and all that. So I don't see the advantage of holding this at all, because we're, all we're saying is research it. That's all we're saying. So I'm against the hold, because it's just delaying the obvious. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Any other comments on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion? Request has been made to use the board. This is on the motion to hold the item until the second meeting in May.
May that?
Motion to hold. Alder Scannell? The motion is to hold, however. Yep.
It says, hold until the second meeting in May.
Six to six. Well, this is appropriate for this council, right? So I'm voting against the motion to hold, so that we can send some direction to, to staff on the item and, and get the research that, that I think this item deserves. So, back on the floor is Alder Weary's motion, the amendment, motion to amend. Is there any further commentary on that? Seeing none, all in favor. Board again? Okay. Alder Weary, are you able to read that again?
I amended the motion to include exploring banning hormone therapy and sex reassignment surgery for minors, where the sole purpose would be gender reassignment. To be part of the, the broad scope of researching the entire issue.
And that was seconded by Alder Morgan?
Yes.
Any discussion on that? Any discussion on that?
Yes, just.
Alder Scannell?
I think it's, I think it's redundant, because we've already told staff to research this whole thing. So why are we, it's redundant, except for the order includes the word ban in it. What we're doing is the same thing, only without the word ban. Research gender identity, gender sexual orientation, and come back. So the whole thing is being explored already.
We discussed all this.
Thanks. Thanks, Alder. Yep. Any further comments? On the, it's on Alder Weary's amendment. Any further comments or questions? Request has been made to use the board, so we will do that. Motion to amend. Entertaining motion?
Motion to refer.
Motion to refer is amended.
And amended.
Made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Galvin. Further discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Yes.
The ayes appear to have it, and that item has been referred to staff. On to report of the Protection and Policy Committee granting operating licenses.
Approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Any or names to be handled separately or abstentions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Report of the Park Committee.
Approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Weary. Items here to be handled separately? Hearing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, that report has been approved. Report of the Personnel Committee.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Galvin. Items here to be handled separately? Hearing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and that report has been approved. We've got a couple informational items, municipal court, monthly financial report and the building report for February 2024, and then on to resolutions.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules, take up these items with one roll call vote made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Comments on that?
I just need to abstain from item one, resolution one, my board of directors that I report to also are the board of directors pertaining to this project.
Very good. That will be noted. Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor of suspending the rules, take up the taking these items with one roll call vote, will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the rules are suspended.
Approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Steyer, and we will use Those are adopted unanimously, noting Alder Burnett's abstention. Ordinance is first reading?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules, take up these items with one roll call vote made by Alder Scannell. Second. Seconded by Alder Ek. Discussion, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the rules are suspended.
Motion to advance.
Motion to advance made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Galvin. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, those ordinances have been advanced to second and final reading, petitions and communications. Adjournment?
Motion to adjourn it.
Motion to adjourn made by Scannell, seconded by Alder Steyer and Burnett. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Say aye.
We're adjourned.